Good morning. Welcome to the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, April 8th, 2019. Called the meeting to order. First item of business is to review the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. Tom does move. Jeff is second. It all does in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we will receive comments from the public. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board on a subject that is not on our agenda, please step forward, state your name and address for the record? Anyone? All right, none. Item number four, is discussion possible action to approve claims dated April 8th, 2019, in the amount of $1,861,804.34.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jeff is moved. Tom does is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item five, discussion of possible action authorizing the Historic Preservation Commission to submit a grant application to the State Historical Society of Iowa under the Fiscal Year 2020 Historical Resources Development Program and Country School Grant Program in the amount of $11,590 with Historic Preservation Commission. Good morning.
Thank you. That was a lot.
That was a lot to say.
So you set it off for me. This is something that had started before I came on the commission and we've kind of pared it back from what we had started with because we were also going to add cemeteries into that. That'll come later. But the Muscatine County Schools and Churches will survey the ones that are historic and the ones that are still, that are not there. So they will find the names, the locations, and the addresses of those buildings that were significant in the county. The project title is the Historic County Schools and Churches Run a Reconnaissance Survey in Muscatine County. And we've applied to the state, or we will be applying to the state if we get approval for the grant. I think you received a budget in your packets. What we're asking for is approval of the grant application so we can submit that and approval of the payment schedules as indicated on there. Are there any questions?
It looks like most of the grant match dollars are coming from the kind of donations that your group has solicited, Jane. Is that correct?
That's true. And there's some of the bridge money that was for the historic bridge that will be coming into this.
Any cash matched between those dollars?
Right.
I have a question, Jane. Are they going to the areas where these schools no longer there? Are they looking at putting markers?
Eventually, we'd like to do that.
Put markers there?
Yes. So we'll have, we're going to GPS those in as part of this contract with Tall Grass is the provider and the Leah Rogers will be the consultant that we're using. So we'll do some windshield time already. We've done that. But then we'll go back and confirm the exact sites and GPS those in. The ones that are still there, there are several of them that have been reused as homes. Some of them have been completely obliterated. And then some of them are dilapidated and not, you know, but at least we can mark where they are.
I was just curious because I own a farm that had one that sat there and I was just curious. My wife said, how they gonna do this? I said, I would propose to the long range, would we to put some type of marker there? Very good.
Any other questions?
Will these, will the GIS points, would you then put those in magic or?
Yes, they definitely would go into magic. We want to make sure that there's public access. Right now, there's no public access to any of the information. You can't go someplace and get it. You can go to the University of Northern Iowa. They have some records. But in the grant application, that was one of the things that we wanted to make sure that people in Muscatine County and people that are interested in their genealogy would be able to go and find out where those schools and churches were.
Very good.
Promotion. All who's moved to approve. Jeff is moved. Scott is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item number six, item with planning and zoning administrator Eric Furnas. First up, discussion of possible action to approve resolution 04-0811901, approval of the combined preliminary and final plat of Blessings Point subdivision. More in here?
More in, sir. Blessings Point subdivision is a one-lot residential subdivision off North Isit, Missouri orientation. It's just north of the bus barn. Literally just a hop, skip, and a jump north of the city limits. There is approximately 20-acre piece of ground with the redneers that purchased or are purchasing. One building site. It's been zoned residential for some time. The use of the, all that area, as you're aware, is all residential for the most part. So zoning commission recommended unanimously to approve this preliminary, combined preliminary and final one-lot residential subdivision.
I'll move to approve.
Jeff is moved. Scott is seconded. We'll call both. Jeff?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Anything else there? All right. He threw up to you. Item number seven. County engineer Keith White. First on the agenda is discussion and possible action to approve various utility permits.
Good morning. We have one permit today from Alliance Energy of Lisbon, Iowa. And they are relocating an overhead line on 122nd Street, just west of State 70 where we have a culvert project.
Move to approve.
I move. Second, I smell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up are fiscal year 2020 DOT secondary road budget and secondary road construction plan, AKA the five-year plan.
Let's take... A lot of pages here. I guess I'd like to start with the budget. Everybody got copies that need copies?
I got mine.
The budget. That is concurrent. So the way, you know, the, a couple of you haven't seen the DOT budget and program. We have two years of actual numbers of estimate of the year we're currently in. And then the column to the far right which says "next" is the budget. And those numbers are identical to what was submitted and approved in the county budget. While you're basically see on the third page, the budget, I mean, that's really... A quick review up there, 70X Admin and Engineering, that's a control item. 020 Construction, that's a control item. 71X Roadway Maintenance, that's a control item. 72X General Roadway, that's a control item. Which in the DOT budget, we're allowed to go up to 10% over any of those numbers. It's just the bottom line cannot be exceeded. So the grand total down there cannot be exceeded of the $9,476. So again, these are the same numbers we already looked at in the county budget. Do you think there's any budget questions? Moving on, we'll move on. We sort of talked about this during budget. So there's our larger ones, a little easier to see. This one, I'm just looking at the year ahead of us. What we place on this map for you is everything which will not necessarily line up with the printed document. Because if something's been let, which we know a couple of our bridges have been let, the DOT does not want to see it in there again. But basically, this is what's proposed for fiscal year 20. I'm going to start in the upper left and we'll go around this thing clockwise. Right away, we always stick $25,000 in there unless we know better. For most of 21 of these, that's been more than adequate. I can tell you that the year we're in where we did away with a bridge project and made it a road project, we'll probably end up spending more on right away. And same is true down on G28. But to the right is the Iron City Project, and that's the one I'm talking about where it shows a square which would have been a box culvert, but it's actually, the culvert's being eliminated and a new grading there. And right away acquisitions going pretty well there. The one, the major property owner via his attorney has asked for friendly condemnation that simply has tax benefits for them. That's why they asked for that. So they're not opposed to it. They're the ones that said they're all for it. To the right of that, over there on F-58, east of Durant, over to Walcott, old Highway 6 are the sub drains and culvert repairs on that road in preparation for what we anticipate might be a federal aid swap project. And that number is reflecting half of our dollars and the other half would be Scott County dollars since the center line runs, or the county line runs down the middle of the road, basically. Around the corner, that one that's in Fulton Bridge Replacement, it's a twin box, is actually a Scott County project since it's on their west line. That $150,000 is simply our half of that project. Down below that, 171st Street, going back towards SSAB, that's a project we've kind of long delayed, but is close to ready to be happening. Then down below, on the bottom of the map, are the federal aid swap project past Lutheran Homes out to High Prairie. And from there, further on out to Independence as a farm-to-market project. Right away acquisition, we do have Lutheran Homes signed documents, but we're still waiting on Big Stone Band-Ag. So I can't predict, I don't, I think the chance of, bear in mind, we're talking about fiscal year, so this starts July 1. I don't think the chance of building it in calendar 19 is very good. Calendar 20 hopefully is real good. And so that would still be within this program. But it's a carryover because we had hoped to build it this year. And then coming back up, we just have our culverts in various locations, which we're allowed to collect projects together that way. And then further up, we have a Boro Swap Project 68, which is a bridge just northeast of Nichols there. And then up by West Liberty, we have Boro 64, which is our historic bridge replacement. So that is the fiscal year ahead. Questions on any more of that?
I have a question, Keith. On the one up by Stockton, is that the road that drops south into Stockton there? Is that just east of there, just a short distance, maybe an eighth of a mile or something like that that we're talking about that work?
It's from Durant all the way to?
It's all the way across?
Okay.
Yeah. Got you.
It's preparation for a paving project.
Got it.
I just have a few questions. In basically your wording, the PCC is basically your pourable concrete?
Thank you, man. Portland cement.
Portland cement, okay. And when you say overlay, means it's an overlay? We're not replacing it?
When you name them for the DOT convention, it's what's the primary item of work. The primary item will be on top. So it will be an overlay. There is reconstruction. I'd actually firm out on this, the reconstruction, but there's more overlay than there's reconstruction.
So we're pouring concrete on top of existing concrete? Is that the way you just explained it?
Actually, in this case, we're pouring, and what we normally do, we're pouring concrete on top of asphalt.
Okay.
The Portland, the concrete part along, that's all reconstruction and the realignment's reconstruction. But from there on, we're on top of the existing asphalt road.
Okay. And then on your culverts?
Yes.
Where it says culvert replacement, culvert repairs. The replacements, are those all concrete replacements or are those going to be like drain slash 30-inch tile type deals or?
Well, depending on which one you...
Well, I just, that's why I don't know. It doesn't six, I mean, so I might, for example, like if you look at the far right, the far right one says...
We'll cover them all. Starting at the top, again, that one that was programmed as a culvert replacement is just a road. We found that we could acquire the right of way and eliminate a structure. And then the next one over, the purple line, the sub drains would be a tile line along the side, both sides of the road, but the culvert repairs, crossroads. My practice, our practice has been concrete culverts underneath pavements or possibly liners, depending on what we encounter. Typically, if it's really deep and it can get a liner, then we would put a PVC liner through there.
Right through it, okay.
And then around the corner, that bridge replacement is a twin reinforced concrete box. So you're talking a big board concrete box. And that, down on 171st, that's also a concrete culvert replacement across there. Down on G28, we've already done all the culvert work there. And actually, the two, one by West Liberty, the one by Nichols, those both happen to be, well, the top one is a twin reinforced concrete box and the second one we hadn't designed yet. So you see a CCS is a continuous concrete slab or four twin reinforced blocks. We try and do a box if we can make it work. Said eliminates guardrails. Lot better for the traveling public, but especially the farmers to not deal with that. I was trying to see if I had any update on Bridge 232 and I do not.
Okay.
It's still undetermined what it's going to be. But that's, you, never say never, but you won't see on here a metal culvert. Typically, if it's metal, that's something we're going to do ourselves. So they're either going to be concrete, precast concrete culverts, or they're going to be cast-in-place boxes. And sub drains will be your tile line.
Perfect. That helps me understand it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions on this here?
One down, four to go.
Yes, and I'm going to do this and try a little bit differently this year. I'm going to do it from the map. We've got a large one. This one has all five years on there with the current year being the bright one, the brighter colored yellow one.
Thank you.
And I have, you know, kudos to Dennis for putting the map together. I said before, this is something we don't have to do. We have it for a long time. Everything we do has to be and is online. So each project separately stuck on a map, but I feel like this is a good way to reflect what we're doing. One of the things I like to talk about is if it is in this five-year program, then it's totally within the board's say of whether or not you do a project. Just because it sets out there in fiscal year 2024, we haven't really had it happen, but I could come to you and say, hey, that's, we need to deal with that bridge now. And by resolution, you advance the project. All we have to do is tell the DOT where's the money coming from. Which usually means you've got some extra money or we're not going to do some other project, you know, delay one. But anything that goes in here, you can do. The DOT in recent years has went to the fact that our work needs to be fiscally constrained. We are allowed to borrow ahead. If I didn't bring, lots of times at review time, I brought you the farm-to-market and the bridge balances. But if you look at them, you'll see probably a third of the counties in red, borrowed ahead, and two-thirds not. Some with lots of money already being noted that they're going to lose it if they don't use it, which I don't know why they don't hire a consultant and use it. But we try to keep spent. We try and be ambitious with the program, but we don't try and, there were counties that they would put $50 million on this map. It's not going to happen. So you're misleading the public. So we always feel ours is ambitious, but doable. And barring delays like right-of-way acquisition or Indiana bats or whatever gets in the way or historic bridges. And, you know, we certainly, we more than meet the fiscal constraints. The actual program itself, if anybody need the program, I've printed copies of the program. Keith, the back page of that for a second. Which you'll see fiscal year twenty, about eight million, twenty-one, about six million. And you see it falling off twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Well, that's because we, you know, we spent our money. That's, that's why it's falling off and we have to let our funds get well. This also, you know, reflects down there swap is the federal aid. There's two kinds that come. Bridge federal aid comes directly and the others applied for through the region. And, and that ebbs and flows. Now, reality is out by twenty twenty-four, will we have another dose of dollars coming? Prob, probably. So, um, and, and then I guess I should start at the top. Lab, LCL is local. Those are dollars that we anticipate spending out of local dollars. Now, what we normally do in that process is we look at. We just figure we're gonna, and maybe getting tougher, but we figure we, we can take a million of our local dollars and spend that towards construction. So that would mean we had five million available over the five years. Well, we've got seven and a half million program. Farm-to-market, we'd get about a million. That's money that sets in Ames, belongs to this county. So again, we'd get five million. We have, uh, a two and a half million balance. So we've got seven and a half million and we've got seven point four million program. And then the swap or the bridge money, there's about three hundred and sixty-five thousand a year. Our balance is six dollars. We've got, so we'd have one million eight twenty-five and we've got a million eight thirty-one then totally available. And we've got two million nine program, which means we're borrowing. And then the swap has, you know, right now, we have three point five million. Allocator does, and we have three and a half million program. So, uh, we're, we're kind of in the black on everything except bridges. As proposed, will be about three years in the hole. We can go six. We normally don't like to get real far in because if road use money doesn't come in like they think or they hope, then they start saying, if you're two years borrowed, you can't do a program. You know, or you gotta be in the black. So I'm just, that's a quick overview of how we put the dollars together. And before we even look at the five years, I want to tell you that we have. We look at a year twenty-five, which is not here. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bridges in twenty-five that should be done, the total about eight million dollars. Just once you know, we don't have that. Before I came here, the board looked at not doing some things. And I think we're at that point again. A lot of these bridges, a few years ago, our average box or bridge cost us one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand. It's costing us four hundred thousand today, three years later. We got a little, a little bump in the gas tax, it's gone. I mean, it's absorbed by prices. You know, the, the road funds gone up seriously, about two percent a year like this. Construction gone like this. I'm sure you saw the same sort of things happening in the city. So this is my twenty-first one of these. It's the first time you've heard that part of the speech from me. But I've always felt we were neither a donor nor a receiver county on our road use dollars, tax dollars. You're a Missouri border county with five, six thousand people. I don't know how they're gonna even survive their systems. And most of them probably have two, three times as many bridges as we do. And they're all, probably half of them are bad. They benefit from all that traffic on the interstate, giving them some dollars. I always felt like we had enough people paying road use tax. Said we're probably neither a donor nor a, uh, extra beneficiary. But it's, it's getting tighter, folks. That's the, the object of that speech. You know, we look at every single year, we thoroughly look through our bridge inspections again and decide what really ought to happen and when. Some of it's crystal ball, a little bit of crystal ball based on experience rubbing. And frankly, we've, we've aligned pretty well on what bridges need to happen. The day of the Channel Eight news story, they interviewed me for forty-five minutes. And I think y'all maybe saw the ten seconds of it on the TV. But they asked me, I talked about this map and I actually had to point that out. You know, what's out to sea? Fracture critical, we only got one. That's one that the state gifted to us. Now, these two we've replaced to over three million dollars that were not ours fifteen years ago. The state gave them to us. This whole thing we're talking about has been millions here, millions. State gave to us. So you know, the S, scarer critical. Fracture critical means if one member fails, the bridge fails. There's no redundancy. Scarer critical means you have a flood. Imagine that. When the water goes down, is the bridge still there or is it hanging there in the air? These, these are ones that are susceptible. We've already replaced that one, so it's actually off the map. That one's in the program. We just let that one. I'll replace that. Two, uh, that one's maybe an ever that goes down to headwater. But you see, we've got most all of those. So, so what do you want to get off here? You want to get the scarer criticals off? Fracture critical, not. This one not quite so bad. And, and then if they're posted, we, we want to give it to those things so that we're not eliminating the farmers. Even though Ag is exempt, they, they're still liable if they take a bridge because they're overweight. So that's, and your pave system is gonna get higher priority. And I don't think we have anything posted on the pave system. So that's just, so I know we've got two new members and that's just an overview of how we, we choose things. So let's, let's start at the top here and go around. I'm gonna skip the ones that are in the year ahead. So the first one I see in, in twenty-one is Moscow Road. The piece between the, uh, between F seventy and Highway six for a Portland overlay. So that would be similar to what happened on Y fourteen or Taylor or the Moscow blacktop, which is now white top. And then to the right of that is, uh, our sub-drain repairs and culverts on nine twenty-seven and twenty-one. In twenty-two is, in blue next to that is the swap project, hot mix asphalt overlay. We're doing something unique with that project. First off, the design will be similar, if not identical, to what Scott County did from Walcott towards Stavenport. But our observation has been that Scott County seems to get better bids on our asphalt projects than us. So we've asked them to let this. Normally, we would let it on our north line. And, and you can say, no, no, we want to let it. Get your hand up now, please. But we think we'll see better prices if we let Scott County let the project. It's fifty-fifty by us, but, and, and, and they are agreeable to do that. So that's, that's something unique. Normally, the north and the west line are ours. And next to that for twenty-one is the one I was pointing out in the corner there by Walcott, bridge replacement. And then starting around there, we've, we've got two along Y thirty there, which are bridge replacements. And I said, you're seeing, we know the size is there. It's either gonna be a continuous slab, concrete slab or twin box, if, if we can make a twin box work. Coming around to the bottom, out there on Trolley Avenue in twenty-two, a bridge replacement. I think we've already got that one designed, I believe. And that is a precast, a pre-stressed, precast concrete beam and bricks, a little bigger bridge. And you see half a million dollar price tag on that. And to the left of that is the purple, uh, on one hundred and fiftieth, bridge replacement in twenty twenty-three. And the left of that is Stewart Road, uh, reconstruction. We have changed courses on that one. We think, we, we've been in there for repairs and diamond grinding and we think we're just getting too far gone on that. So we think we're gonna have to let her flip it a reconstruction and that stretch is Stewart Road. Two point two million.
Now, Keith, could that Stewart Road one, would that presumably embarrass him perhaps? Get the support thing comes to pass?
Oh, yes.
Then be up to it with the reconstruction?
Yes.
What, what kind of weight limit would that have, you know, off, offhand?
I, I don't. We are in the part of the county with the sands down there that, that as long as you have an adequate pavement hold up really well. Because the drainage is, is quite good down there, except right now while it's coming the other way under the Levee and up. We do have water on the edge of Pettibone, which doesn't happen very often, but it is because we're at that kind of crust. That, that, uh, what we're proposing to do, there is a difference from the last year. And then clear to the bottom left, those are just all our collective, uh, smaller culvert projects. Sometimes it's just one, but we can gather them together. And we really look at things out there that we feel are a little bigger, a little more complex than what we want to do ourselves. They're designed for concrete culverts and, and let. And above that is a swap bridge on Holly. And I'm not, it might be designed there. Actually, I don't know, that would be a triple reinforced concrete box. And that is the five-year program in a quick run through. And just a, you know, a quick, quick review there on that back page of the program. You know, we got a total of about five million. So it's averaging out to our one a year of local dollars. We've got seven point four million of farm-to-market dollars, which we have to go in the hole to get there. No special, no federal aid because they're all swapped. And so about six point four million in either federal aid, road or bridges. And programing a total of about nineteen million dollars.
Keith, could you, when you, uh, possibly start getting this ready for construction, could you give us distances on these for, for me? Hypothetically, for example, like the Stewart Road one, is that, you know, two point two miles? Is that, you know, is it the one over there on the twenty-twenty on the culvert on one hundred and seventy-first street? Is that, you know, five hundred feet? How much, that would understand how much, how much we're getting per foot, per five hundred grand?
We figure normally about a million a mile on Portland pavement. And so over there, we do have a rather large structure and we're only about three quarters of a mile there on one hundred and seventy-first.
If we could just add a little line item as we start getting it to it. I mean, I understand, but as you just mentioned earlier today, the cost for construction is going up more than what the cost that we're estimating. So my hypothetical for Stewart Road was probably accurate in two point two miles.
Yeah.
In your estimate.
Yes.
But if those numbers change, I want to know reflective of what our budget's gonna need to be if next time it's gonna be, you know, one and a half miles for two point two million.
And that, you know, that certainly could be.
Exactly. Also, I'm getting at is just so for, in probably coming years, it would be good for us to just have an idea of what is the distances that we're looking at, that you're wanting to replace.
Okay. We, we, we do, and, but I don't think you're saying you want to see them sooner. We, you know, that we do when you see the plans.
Well, in, in the twenty-twenty, for these next five years, this, when we do the projects, I'm sure you're gonna have that, but I'm just, we started doing the five-year plan.
Here, here. You know, I skipped over the, really skipped over the words of the program. But let's find Stewart Road, for example, which is. I have about five pages in, one, two, three, four, five pages in. The LFM, which the RL is local farm-to-market. And Stewart Road from Fruitland Road, G Terrain, Comus, between corporate limits, PCC construction. And you have the average daily traffic, which ranges from two thousand two hundred eighty to four thousand three hundred forty. And the length is two point eight nine two miles. And, uh, so that's.
So that's already on this portion of it?
The ADT, the length, the length should be on all of these. And this has both federal aid and farm-to-market contemplate. No, that's the system. The major work is PCC.
Okay. This, this will be adequate for me, though.
Anyway, this is something by code that we were required to, uh, approve and send to the DOT. They, they really have been considerably more user-friendly in, in recent years. Used to be like no flexibility with the budget and the program that you send them. And now with flooding sets, you, you need, or a bad winter, you need to change course. I mean, those counties in western Iowa just got wrecked. You know, so they pretty much let you amend your budgets for events like that where they used to, it was just almost no mercy. Questions on this? And, and I'll certainly also take your feedback. I went through it differently than in the past. If that works well for you or if it did not.
Do you do any kind of cost-benefit analysis based on traffic? And, you know, I'm thinking, I'm looking at, at some of these, if I'm reading it right. Might be thirty-five cars a day. And we're in line spent for half a million dollars on it. You know, I know we, we need to serve the whole county, but how do we decide if, if a bridge or a culvert or a road is, is. but how do we decide if a bridge or a culvert or a road is worth, provides the amount of utility we need in order to justify that?
That's a good question. It really is. We typically don't do an actual cost of benefit ratio, except there are certain funds that require that. That's the time that we do that. Other than that is based on our experience of maintaining the grid. I can tell you the, the bridge that I sort of thought ought to have gone into year twenty-four. Now, I don't have the ADT on here, but it was probably half to three quarters of a million and had fifteen vehicles per day. So we didn't put it in there. To qualify for federal money, it has to be either structurally deficient, which means there are things wrong with it that it might eventually fall down. Or it has to be functionally obsolete, which means you go out there. It normally means it's going, oh, boy, this is horrible. Am I gonna hit the bridge? Or you just go, man, this thing's narrow. That's functionally obsolete. On the, each bridge inspection report, it gets a sufficiency rating. It has to be a hundred, a brand-new bridge rates out ninety to a hundred. Everything's perfect. It has to be below fifty to receive federal funds. So it has to be in a, not the best of conditions. We're typically looking at, is it on the pave system? That's first priority. You know, how many, based on our, the bridge inspections and our opinion, how many years of life does it have left before it falls down? You know, does it meet? We typically look at that criteria on every bridge. Input from the public, input from the board. I'll tell you, we've built a couple since I've been here that I would not agree with, that the board thought we should, and the public thought, public thought we should, and therefore you thought we should. So we look at all of that, and said, traffic count certainly plays in there. And I think there are numerous hard decisions ahead based on need and dollars on where does that play?
I mean, if you're telling us we already need to, we're not gonna be able to do everything we want to get done?
Right.
And not to pick on any particular project. I'm just looking at the one that my real quick skimming has at probably the highest cost per vehicle. So what's the life of, let's say, the Trolley Avenue Bridge?
It's gonna be a bridge, so probably seventy-five years.
All right. So we're paying?
Max.
The county's paying seventy-five to eighty cents for every car, every time a car goes across it for its life. And that doesn't seem like a lot, but we're probably paying pennies for a lot of the other ones. It just, I don't know. Trying to figure out how to strike that balance of how do we use the folks' money most effectively versus how do we serve everyone in the county is, gives me some heartache.
Well, some of, some of the calculations you have to also use on this is a little commodities.
Sure.
You know, not, not just, not just automobile traffic, but commodity movement. And what do you?
A non, I could give you a number of non-bridge examples, but quite a few years ago now, this road, despite whatever, gets beat up by traffic to and from the steel. And it's beat up and bad and complained by people here right now. Some of the other complaints that, I know Nathan got one. The neighbor is Holland Grain, Oral Rota. We've got roads torn up hauling hog manure, torn up, destroyed. Doug and I, we had a discussion last week. Now, we've lost some roads since, since then by those kinds of actions. Anyway, we had this road closed, but the public came in and he also opened it. I mean, it was close closed, with the board saying, and you reverse your action, we open it back down. A lot does have, and that was because of farmers. They didn't have a whole lot of options to move up and get up here on a highway, which they didn't want to do. And so you look a little bit about, we have, our smallest system is the federal aid system. And then the next biggest one is the foreign-to-market system. That's, that's the funds that's set in aims, that's a subset of this. It's like two hundred miles, but it's expected that no farmer would have to go more than a couple miles to hit a foreign-to-market road, which would be a better road to move from lottery to market. So you have to look at maintaining that grid. Again, I, personally, I think the place we start is looking at some of these dead ends that are, we're spending not seventy cents, but a hundred dollars per vehicle movement to live in a swamp. The river takes the road away two times a year.
I think you said our average cost per mile in most of these counties around seventy-five hundred bucks to maintain a road, right?
Yeah.
And so that's probably a great place to start looking at some of these roads to say, seventy-five hundred a mile, what kind of economic activity or what kind of public benefit is happening on that road?
That seems, if we're gonna be in a, in an era where we can't do everything we want to do, that seems to be the best way to systematize the decision-making. Not that we plug everything into a formula and that's cut and dry, but it gives us a jumping off point for our analysis.
We can certainly look at giving you a better answer to that question, Nathan.
I mean, yeah, and I picked on Trolley, not because it's, I think there's nothing wrong with it. It was just what stuck out to me and the thing. But, you know, that may well be, it's a, it's a, you know, a road down the hill there. There are many other options there, you know? Whereas other parts of the county may be a lot easier to traverse or to jog around. You know, I don't know. It's, it's a decision above my pay grade, or at least the fundamentals of the analysis are. But I'd like to know that we, or like to know how we, you know, your recommendations as to how we can address that going forward. No, that's a very good idea.
So I only had one, one request. On projects that we do in the past, maybe half a million to a million dollars, do we ever do pictures before and after, or anything like that for, for us to see? Or even on our website?
We, we do, and I'm gonna tell you, we're not real good at that. But we do.
Could we look into that in the future? I mean, maybe something that we can probably start putting in into our county website or something? Just kind of let the public see where those dollars are going? And then as a, as a general, and it doesn't need to be twenty pictures. Maybe, you know, one or two pictures before, one or two pictures in between, and then, hey, this is what the product looks like at the end. So, so we can kind of view really what, what we're doing with our dollars and where they're going. I'm not saying the quarter million, small, you know, culverts, but when you start saying we're replacing a whole road from, you know, Moscow Road, X fifty-four, or?
Well, Taylor would have been a great example of a road that was tough sheet. A lot of control on it. It's a really nice road.
But, but then you can kind of see that, and that, that helps promote what we're doing with, with the dollars. And, and I can share that and say, hey, here's where the dollars are going on our website. But I tried to look it up, and I couldn't find anything under projects or construction under our county website. So I didn't know if we had anything, and if we don't, I think it would be something maybe coming in, into July, as we start getting into the projects. If you could probably take one or two pictures, kind of before and after, is what I'd request. That's all I have.
Yeah, it'd be great to say, here's the bridge we built with your tax money on the website.
I've seen some of the, some of the counties on their website. I've seen they have pictures out there.
You can, I'm sure you can kind of get the idea of what we're looking at.
I can hardly know, something like Stewart Road, how many times have been patched, fixed, repaired that road?
Can't tell you today what its age is, but it's, you know, it's past its.
It's way, it has its partners, and it carries a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
It does.
A lot of these that I see on this, I don't know how many repairs on it, a lot of these.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that's something everybody's gonna wrestle with at some point. We, you know, because construction costs go up kind of naturally. And is, is the, you know, your, your funds available, don't go keep pace with it. The only option is to maintain less. You know, you gotta say, how do you make that decision? What option you maintain or what do you abandon? You remember here, a few years ago, or it's been two years now, three, Keith, where we had the discussions about different roads and whether we should just class B them or vacate them or whatever. No one ever wants to do that either.
Right.
It's kind of a, it's kind of a difficult situation at some point. You know, can we afford a section road every mile? Well, it costs a lot of money to do that. And agriculture's changing every day, the roads are getting bigger. They're getting, you know, we have more consolidated operations that are all on bigger, heavier loads. So you get more time-sensitive loads, and it's not just green or farming now. You know, there's a lot of livestock farming, which have different demands and needs, and that kind of gotta go every day, kind of stuff. And it has a different impact on your infrastructure that we have to kind of plan it for. Just the size of the equipment. And last, just go back increments of decades and look at the size of the equipment that we've gone over. And it takes substantially more to support and provide the service to operate that equipment.
I mean, it's a lot of livestock, so you've got feed coming when you're going out.
And I don't know if anybody's ever done kind of like a consolidated planning, where you plop that stuff on a map, and even green, you know, where's it moving from and to. And then you have elevators, so there's probably, if you look at it, there's probably, you know, do you think about creating a backload network? And kind of the whole concept of foreign market, but even more consolidated on a regional basis to say, you know, we want to drive the traffic to these roads and then build the road portion. Because you can't build them all to the standard, you know, to hold this. It's not gonna happen, you can't. And then you also have the migration of some of the, you know, residential to the country, too. And that's happening at a greater rate. And they have a different expectation of what a road is than maybe a farmer does. And that is a compounding issue, too.
What's your one? Anybody else? Keith, thank you very much. Do you have anything else for us?
Don't they have to take it?
We want the projects update.
So we do need to approve the budget program so that we can submit it.
Any motion?
So I'll make the motion to approve the budget in front of your program.
Hold a second.
Move Santos in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Keith, for your hard work on this, we appreciate it.
Sure.
Now projects update.
Really, most, anything new on projects, I kind of mentioned as we were going through the, through the program here. So I don't think I have anything additional there unless you have questions.
All right. Anything else?
That's all.
Thanks for your time, sir.
Thanks.
Next up, update with information services director Bill Riley. Good morning, Bill.
First thing I had on my list was to discuss the help desk reports, which overall, numbers are about the same as where they have been as far as total number of tickets. You know, how the breakout comes out varies a little bit. I did work out for those to break out our overall response time, take out things that are after five PM or before eight AM, as well as on weekends for tickets submitted. And so you can see how the average breaks out overall, and then by user in the office. So during business hours, obviously, our response times are much faster. After hours, we've been having several things come in, especially on third shift, where they're not getting answered until, you know, six o'clock in the morning or seven o'clock. And then we had, there were twenty-two after-hour tickets this past month, and I think there were about six of those that were weekend tickets. Do you have any questions on those reports? Is that a better way of showing how the averages break out? Give you a little better idea of what your goal is, why it may be going up or down? Okay? This morning, we did move from our PRI to our SIP connection for our phone system. That was really on my side, just basically moving from one cable to another cable. Essentially, had all of our numbers, or hopefully has all of our numbers ported over before seven-thirty this morning. And so far, so good. Or at least it was before I came off. So we are moving to replace our Microsoft's built-in spam and virus filtering to what we were already using to check some of the links in emails or the attachments in emails for executables or malicious content. Hopefully, that will do better. We've seen more and more come to our inbox. And that actually was at a reduced price to what we had been paying for just the attachment and the hyperlink filters. That went down, I believe, about thirteen hundred dollars per year. So we have been encouraging users to move two-factor authentication for their email accounts. That's where you're using something like a password, something you know, and something you have, like a generated key. Approves the security for the email accounts and the network by doing that. That's a zero dollars included with our current email license, as well as we're going to be moving our users that have remote access through two-factor authentication. And that, again, is included in our appliance. And that's just going to be to improve security. Ultimately, we're going to look at if there's a better way that we can do things for our desktops through two-factor authentication, where people can log in with the swipe of a card, fingerprint, what have you. And we're waiting to see how somebody that other counties are doing this and what the costs or applications would be to allow for this. There's more and more people looking to do this. There's more and more methods available now than there used to be. So, and then I just wanted to let you know that this week, I will be working with some other counties from ICIT to go in and assess the needs of Lwizet County's IT department. See if it's sufficient where they're at with their current contract from an outside agency, or if they need to look at hiring somebody more of an in-house department. And that is just something that the ICIT group does, kind of a pay it forward type project.
So this is a group of other county IT directors and going to do a basically a system review for?
Right. And since I'm on the board with the ICIT group for Region Five. And since I'm on the board with the I C I T. group for Region Five, or District Five, excuse me, uh, it's just generally the board members that are doing these things for them. And, uh, as time has gone on, they're trying to get, you know, more regional coverage as opposed to, you know, sending us across the state up into the northwest corner.
Right.
So, that's pretty much everything.
Is that coordinated through I S A C.?
No, this is actually just something through I C I T., which is an affiliate member of I S A C. So, it's Iowa County Information Technology Group. So, it'd be something more like the auditors group or the treasurer's group.
So, this isn't something that I S A C. drives, even like the auditors group, those groups are just groups of, of like organizations that get together and kind of help each other, and I S A C. really doesn't, other than you're all members or affiliate members, do they enable or assist that?
They, they do with the auditors some. There are some aspects with I S A C., I S A C. oversees the precinct Dallas program, so, I mean, there are some, is some involvement there, but, um, but it's still its own entity. I'm sure theirs is too.
Yeah, I mean, I know that over the past month or so, that they, you know, rely on I S A C.'s legal counsel for some membership, possible membership changes, uh, and what that would, you know, if there would be implications for taxes or...
So, they provide that to this group as an affiliate member?
Right. So, do you have other questions for me, or comments or concerns?
Thank you, Bill.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Item number nine is discussion of possible action to accept the following reports, unless anybody has any objection, I'd entertain doing all four together.
I just have a question on D.
Oh, sure.
Um, under the, on D., it brings in Amy's report under motor vehicle administrations. What, what does that ninety K. really do? Where's that, what is that? Because you got your motor vehicle tax, your renewal postage, is that renewals for vehicles?
Is that your registration?
Is that, yeah, is it the reg, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, and then...
I believe so.
I would, I would think it would be.
Okay, and so then the interest, where does that come from?
The funds that we have in the payment, in the bank, and that, and the, Amy invests any excess monies that we have available, I mean, it's, it's very limited what she can invest in, it's defined by the code.
Okay, so that it's, it's obviously generated quite a bit from last year to this year?
Yes, because we saw interest rates drop drastically, and we were getting next to nothing, and now they're starting to go back up.
Yeah, if you look historically at the treasurer's office, you know, when interest rates, you know, we'll talk many year, you know, years and past, the treasurer's office almost was paid for by the interest on, on county funds, and then, you know, when the, when the banking kind of rolled and the interest rates went down, 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 you know, we got an advantage in all of our capital projects, of course, but then again, we got no revenue for the treasurer's office, and it was, you know, the, I mean, we had, that number was down into maybe twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for years, maybe if I can call, so that's a, that's been a help to her budget.
Yeah, no, I, and I just didn't know where it was generated from, so...
That's where it comes from, all the proceeds sitting in the bank.
Nope, I'm good. So, I will move to approve all of those.
Seconded, yeah. So, Santos has moved just to seconded, and just for the folks in audience, we're approving quarterly collection of fees for the auditor in the amount of two thousand twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents, the recorder, the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents, the sheriff, twenty-four thousand five seventeen thirty-three cents, and the treasurer in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and seven dollars and four cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number ten, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the April first meeting.
Move to approve.
So, I think Santos has moved, Jeff's is seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, eleven, correspondence, Santos?
I, I had a, a gentleman I ran into, and I tried to get their information accurately, but I don't know if you've ever gotten directions from a farmer off Long Cat Den, and he asked me to, I'm gonna try to talk, touch base with him again, and I didn't talk to you about this, Leslie, who's looking for an area to get paved past, an old church out there. And I said, okay, um, so I'm gonna reach out to him again a little more, find out more information, but I didn't have all the details of what he wanted to get. Um, that's all I had for correspondence.
Jeff?
Uh, another note. I had a call from a gentleman, Keith had mentioned it earlier, about, uh, road conditions down in the southwest part of the county.
Jeff?
Um, I had, over the weekend, I had a conversation with the individual on a culture situation on, for Kit, uh, north of Highway Six, it's just, it's just a short stretch of pave there, and I've not yet had a conversation with Keith on that, but I certainly will. That's all I have.
Do you have anything?
I had one phone call on Dave Bill, uh, by Keith, back down, he didn't know where it was in Barco, and he's had a traffic, it's been lost there, or a, or a...
Okay. How about any video reports, though?
Uh, we had Muscatine, people first, five-thirty, and Wednesday, or Thursday, we got...
I had none. I had, uh, Muscatine Community Health Association on Wednesday, uh, we had a presentation on suicide prevention efforts, and on Tuesday, uh, up in West Liberty, Bill Kellner and, uh, the West Liberty Rotary put together a forum on public health, it was, uh, very well attended and, and featured some of the various providers, uh, from around the county, very interesting and a lot of good information presented there. Jeff?
Uh, on the first, they had the Muscatine Commission, and, and on the second, they had the Regional Workforce Investment Board. I will tell you that the CEOs on the investment board got together afternoon, and we, uh, I'll write a letter that we plan to send to the, uh, I don't know what you would call it, appeal to the process, uh, there's been four different appeal processes noted, this is just, appears like a non-well thought out change, and that's what we're, you know, if you guys recall, we talked about the Workforce Investment Board, so the state is pushing another set of changes to that board and want to do some more regionalization and consolidations. And if, if you read the letter of the law, the county boards of supervisors on these regions are fiscally responsible for those funds. So, we're the ones accountable for the funds and the proper dispersal of those funds, and yet the state's doing the reorganization drive, and it does not ask us anything about it. So, we are protesting that and saying, you know, we think that people are involved and responsible on the, you know, they're talking about the cost of running these regions, well, in our region in particular, we have no cost because our service provider, which was a community college, is, you know, that is a part of it, well, and they said, well, that's a conflict of interest, and that you need to hire a third party to do that, well, you know, low costs, they don't go to service, so, you know, it's again, uh, I don't know what there's, the rumor mill says that there's a particular interest of third party in providing these services, that might be, uh, drowns in the Workforce Development Group, and, uh, again, it just doesn't make sense to us that, you know, people that are fiscally responsible to the funds aren't involved in the changes and haven't been consulted at all. So, we're gonna send the letter.
Santos, any questions?
On, uh, Friday, we, we had a informal meeting that we got together to, uh, approve a reinforcement wall on the back of, and pour in a concrete, um, wall to help the foundation that they'd been having a lot of the, this we talked about last time on the rainwater coming in, and, uh, we approved that for fifty-seven hundred dollars, and, uh, basically pretty inexpensive for what I think it could address, all the issues that we've been having with water seeping in from the back.
So, the We lead?
The We lead group, yes. And, uh, yeah, so they, we had the approval of that, and we're gonna move forward, starting that on this, uh, next week. That was on Friday, not Thursday, when I told you, Leslie.
Okay. Item number thirteen, receive information from county employees. I see Brian is up there.
Good morning. I gave you a handout, just brief assessment of the river levels presently, Mississippi River here at Muscatine, it's predicted to crest today or tomorrow, and it appears that it's crested at twenty-one point eight. Unfortunately, it's gonna kind of stay in that pattern of above major stage. The other concern is, Thursday, there is a system coming, and based on the weather service's information, a little vague on what's going on, I have a webinar with the National Weather Service out of Davenport this afternoon, try to get a little more information, but it looks like, uh, forecasting a lot of rain north of us, and the Dakotas, Minnesota, Wisconsin are gearing for a blizzard condition, so, we're gonna get some significant snow amounts, so, based on that, one of those where we're not sure how the, how the water's gonna do, uh, hopefully it goes, it goes down, you can see on the graph, it's really not, uh, based on that, based on April showers and May, this is hard to tell. And the other one shows the Cedar River near Combsville, and it's below action stage, so, but again, based on what happens towards the end of the week, you know, do those tributaries start to take something, uh, I'd see, we're looking at a foot of snow, and at this time of the year, there'd be a rapid melt, we're just not sure what the situation is, but I just wanted to let you know about that. I did send you an email, informed you that Highway Twenty-two was, was closed, and I checked that out yesterday, and the water is completely over now. Uh, lastly, since the last time I talked to you, just wanted to let you know that the LeWise County Emergency Manager, she resigned, and the interim right now is the sheriff, and they're in the process of looking to hire. Is there anything else?
Brian, on, on the potentials of, of snow up in Minnesota area, hypothetically, if they were to get that, and then they get a rapid melt, we would be seeing that in a week from now, or three days, or...
That's something where usually it's the hydrologist from the weather service out in Davenport that gives that briefing, and I, it's a question I'm gonna ask with it, it's just, to me, right now, hard to tell how things are, you know, hopefully we don't go over the, the twenty-five-six record. Uh, again, it's just kind of wait and see what's gonna go on, and there, the information that I've been sending you really lays out, you know, the crests and everything, so, the weather service has been great providing that, and I've been sending it out to a, a lot of different people, uh, county, cities, and industry, we've heard on that.
Brian, is that report that you forged, is that something that's generally available to the public from the weather service?
No, I don't believe it is, this is something that, through, is it, okay?
It's up in the right corner of the river page.
Uh, this, this graph, or the report, the situation report slide.
Whichever, yeah, I mean...
The graph is...
This, this, this time you go to Google, you can Google Mississippi River.
The one that says like crest here, like four eight to four...
Um, towards the end of the page, there is some contact information, uh, that's something I would like to, as the emergency manager, develop more of a social media where I can probably get that out a little bit.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that, that made available to the public, if it's not already, just so they can see what we're getting.
My understanding is this far, the, the huge majority of it is going to be north of us, the huge majority.
Right.
And we're not gonna have snow per se, we'll just get it later, because of the, of the temperature, but, uh, yeah, they're...
The water amount, yes.
Yeah, they're talking, snow through the Dakotas, not through the, uh, Minnesota, Wisconsin, so...
We'll keep you informed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Any other county employees? Okay, we'll move on to item fourteen, items of the administration office. Uh, fourteen A. is discussion and possible action to appoint Charles Clark to the Muscatine County zoning board of adjustment for a five-year term ending March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. I'd like to thank Mr. Clark for his application.
And that is the only application that we received, um, at, as a result of two advertisements.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jeff has moved, Santos is seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, for your service, congratulations.
And before we move on, I will tell you that, um, I just learned that, um, another member of the Board of Adjustment, um, who's also a member of the zoning commission, is moving out of the county, is that correct? Um, and so needs to be done by June, so, I'll be advertising again for both of those positions. I think Eric may have a indication of a couple of people who are at least interested, so...
Fourteen B., discussion and possible action to approve or request to hire an administrative secretary in the admin office.
I'm requesting to hire this individual in, at midpoint of, for the grade, um, she has, um, ten-plus years of, um, H R., primarily H R. experience, she has a degree in, in business administration, I think she'll be an excellent fit for our office.
I move to approve, second. Jeff has moved, Doug is seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Fourteen C., uh, review and possibly approve, Community Services Director, Disability Services Coordinator, class specification.
We're at the point now that, that we have a resignation from Kathy, that we're ready to, to start the process of rehiring, um, and so the first thing we typically do when we're gonna start that process is we take a look at the job description and decide if we wanna make any changes to it. Sherry and I made, have made a couple of minor changes that, that really better reflect, um, the language that we use in our budget and such. Um, we had quite a bit of discussion about the educational requirement, and if perhaps that should look different than what it does now, um, because it currently, my fingers will work here, it currently requires a master's of art or master of science degree in social work or other related human service field. Um, we talked about whether that instead should perhaps have a, a business administration or accounting degree, um, we can kind of go either way, I mean, cer- certainly, uh, in-depth knowledge of the social work field and kind of how that whole system works is important as well, um, so that's why we're coming to you and seeing what you think we should do about it.
Are there any essential duties of the position that require a master's degree? Of how many positions do we need to require that?
This requires a master and three years or a ba, I'm sorry, I should have finished that, or a bachelor's and four, five years' experience, so, so we don't stric, we have some others that will do a master with lo- lo- less experience or a bachelor's with a little more.
Okay, so, so a bachelor's with some, some pertinent experience would offset an education work.
Yep.
And over the last few years, this position is really more from the head social worker to a more administrative and managerial type position.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we don't, as our staff is, with, they've regionalized, and the state's taken more over, and then actually outsource, you know, what do you think we should do, to become more of a manager and administrative position? Maybe recur with that. So, so the question is on the...
If you still want the class specification to require a degree in social work or related field, or if you would prefer that be a degree in business administration, um, which is kind of, gonna give them more of a, kind of a, a well-rounded, in terms, I mean, that, that department head manages an extremely large budget, um, and so obviously some financial background is very, very valuable, but having an understanding of kind of how the, the social work, or the social services system works is also very valuable, and the chances that you're gonna find somebody that has a dual degree is extremely unlikely, so...
I guess I'd like to see us be more flexible on the education where there's greater experience, if that's sufficiently big for you.
So, so a bachelor's degree with, with business-related experience is what you're saying?
I, I, you know, the way the job has changed, I'd rather be more, more flexible on the social work side of it, I mean, I'd like them to have experience and understand the system, but I think the most important component of that job right now is being able to, to manage and administer that... that budget and interact with the region in a, in a way that emphasizes the fiscal responsibility of it.
Well, quite frankly, I think that's always been a very key part of that role is there's really, the funding, the funding sources that they deal with are complex, lots of rules, and somebody needs to understand funding sources and rules to be able to put it together. I, I'm a big believer, you know, I believe in education, but I'm also, you know, I know in my own personal life, my education has taught me to learn, and to teach me what I needed to do my job, I was taught that on the job, had by competent professionals, and so I don't get hung up on, do you have a master's in social work or not? I think if you have a, a degree, advanced degree is nice, but a degree with some, with some good relevant experience, I'm, I'm great with that. I think that's a.
So, what if we change this to the requirement is for a bachelor's of art or a bachelor of science? So, the question becomes, do you want that to be in business administration with some social work background, or do you want that to be in social work?
I think I would just put a BS or BA degree and, and with significant relevant experience.
Okay.
In the bus, in that related field.
You know, you could have, you could have somebody with a ton of, you know, business experience, but not a lot of, you know, supervisory and managerial experience, but not a lot of social work experience, and doesn't mean that you're not capable of doing that. We have competent professionals in the jobs doing the work today, and we need leadership, and that's a different role.
Okay. All right, I will make those changes, and then I probably will send this, just email this out to you guys once more to take a look at it, make sure I've gotten, captured what you've wanted there, and then if you're okay with that, we'll, we'll start the process of trying to fill that position.
Bring it back for approval, Leslie.
You want me to do that? Okay.
Unless you're comfortable.
I, I, yeah, I, I'm fine, if you guys are fine, I'm fine with me just making some changes. Send it out to you, if anybody wants more.
Do it.
Yeah.
Sounds good. And I'd also like to just take the opportunity to thank our interim Community Services Director, Jennifer Watkins Shane, and she's been, you know, stepped into a big role, drinking from a fire hose, but I think she's doing a fine job. Item fourteen D is discussion and possible action to adopt a direct deposit policy.
We had talked, brought this concept to you several weeks ago at the request of the auditor and the treasurer to implement direct deposit as a requirement. In talking with Alan, the feedback that we've, that I got was, we cannot require it for anybody hired before January 1st of 2005, and in, in essence, we cannot require it of elected officials, because the way.
We can ask, we're just.
Right, the way we require it is, as Alan said, we can, you can make it a condition of continued employment. And so obviously, we can't do that with an elected official, so letters, and you guys approved at that point, moving forward as long as Alan was okay with it. Alan also strongly suggested we adopt a policy, so that's what you have in front of you here to do the official adoption. Have you sent the letters out?
I've already sent the letters.
Okay, she, Leslie's office has sent.
And we've gotten some back already.
Letters out to everybody who wasn't currently doing direct deposit, the ones that we can go to requiring are worded that way, the other ones, the ones that we can't require it, she still sent a letter strongly urging them to consider doing that.
Because there's only five that we can't require, so we're kind of encouraging them to, if they would allow us to do it, we would like that. Can't afford.
Any discussion, motion to approve?
Move to approve.
All right. Santos has moved, Doug has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item E, discussion and direction regarding HIPAA compliance project.
This is a project that you guys put funding in the current year budget, and then we're carrying some of it over to next year. This project kind of got put on hold for a while just because of my plate, me and so full, but I think we're at a point where we're, we're gonna jump back into it. But one of the immediate questions that has come up from the company that we've hired to do this is, is what's gonna happen is, as we go through this process, there's gonna be policies that get reviewed and approved, and then at the end of it, there'll be a HIPAA compliance manual and remediation manuals that kind of are, contain all of those policies. So, the question is, has come up whether the board wants to approve each one of those individual policies as we go, or whether you're fine with me as project manager kind of approving those as we go, and then the final mediation, remediation plan and, and compliance plan would come to you guys for approval.
Given my experience with HIPAA, I would say, we don't want to be in the business of approving each and every little arcane policy line.
I would, I would agree with that, I would, you know, you'll be the one to best judge whether it gets to fine points of how we do things or not, I don't think the board is that much of an issue with the operation.
Okay.
I would say I would.
And, and I cert, and through this whole thing, Bill Riley is certainly working closely with me as well. We kind of both have our fingers in it to make sure we don't drop any balls and kind of utilize our areas of expertise to, to make sure things are looked at from a couple of different perspectives, so. And I think that's all I have for you.
Are there nothing else? Okay, anybody else have anything? We are adjourned.
You have a minute?